This conference will now be recorded.
All right, good morning. Let's go to order the meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission for May 17, 2021.
Vice Chair Carrie.
Present.
Member Henigan.
Present.
Member Hudson.
Here.
Member Kuduski.
Present.
Chair Marsh.
Here.
I know that's going to mean that you do.
All right, let's add to the pledge of allegiance. My allegiance is to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under this whole liberty and justice for all. I'll ask if there's any public comment. Any of the large audience we have here. Okay, we'll move on to approval minutes. Does anybody have any? Okay, they've stopped well and corrected. Motion.
Remove the approval minutes.
For the favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we have some housekeeping business and congratulations to Rick and Neil for being reappointed.
David.
David, sorry, I'm going to get it wrong with. Sorry, David. You know, you're my favorite. No, no, great to have you back and it's, you know, we were discussing earlier. It's kind of sad that we don't have more volunteers to apply for alternate. So we can all make an effort to do some recruiting. It would be very helpful for the town. Moving on, I think anybody would like to.
Make a motion that Mark Marsh be reappointed as the Chair of Planning and Zoning.
I'd like to second.
I think everybody here wants to second that.
It's up for grabs. Okay, well, I.
You have us.
Okay, I appreciate the confidence and really appreciate the opportunity. So thank you. Thanks for your support. Christie, would you like to help us with the amendments to the?
Okay, the vice chair.
Vice Chair, sorry.
You're right in there.
I'll move that Rick Carey be reappointed as vice chair.
I'll second that. All the favor.
Is doing the thunder penny? I'm sorry.
Marked it.
All right, so goodness. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations, Rick. Good job. Okay, sorry, I went ahead of myself there.
All right. All right, so the item on today's agenda amendments to CCCL ordinance. Actually, what's proposed is an ordinance change ordinance CC4-41, which was the ordinance that was changed back in 2020 to address sheds in Dune crossovers. So at the last commission meeting on May 3, an issue was brought up by Commissioner Steve Cause about around the same time in September of 2020, the amendment was passed to the CCCL line, which made the 1979 line your rear setback. So prohibited really any development past that line unless you apply for variance. So one month later, the ordinance 2020-06 was adopted, which then addressed the Dune crossovers and really enacted the specifications for Dune crossovers and going forward. But what wasn't addressed was that they would still need a variance if they went back past the 1979 coastal construction control line. So Commissioner Cause brought this up because he saw it as somewhat of an inconsistency. And now if you're putting in a Dune crossover, you're forced to go to the Board of Adjustment, pay the $1,500 fee and request a variance. The discussion sort of centered around can they really show a hardship? And obviously hardship can't be self-imposed. So there's some questions related would qualify for variance under the code. So the commission discussed the fact of maybe what we would do is allow for the Dune crossovers if they met all of the requirements of the code, including the new ordinance, to allow it through some sort of administrative special exception, which if you recall is what we did with the sheds. In that same ordinance where the lot size was less than 10,000 square feet, to allow sort of this administrative special exception. Well, when we were drafting this, Coria Gorman appropriately pointed out that we really don't have an administrative special exception process spelled out in our code. So working with staff, we sort of devise the language that's in your agenda item to amend section, I think it's 6441, to allow for subsection 8, that notwithstanding the prohibition against developing past the 1979 coastal construction control line, that we would allow for a Dune crossover if it meets all of the requirements of the code. And all they would have to do is get a building permit. So in essence, it really is an administrative special exception. The building official is just determining that you've met all of the requirements as they exist in our code and also any other applicable jurisdictions. So that's what we're proposing. What I do need to point out is back when we did the sheds ordinance, we did also create under subsection C3E, the administrative special exception for the sheds on those smaller lots. So one comment I would have is if we wanted to, to make this same language applicable to sheds, so that as long as they meet all of their requirements, except for that they now have a smaller lot and we're not going to hold them to those setbacks, that they don't get the administrative special exception, they just simply apply for the building permit. Then the building official determines that they satisfy all of the requirements except for the specific setback, where they would have that issue.
Now I've got to refresh my memory on the sheds. I thought there were sheds that didn't require building permits. It was part of the issue there. But that's the building official if he recalls that. Aren't there smaller sheds that aren't required to have permits, but still are, still would be required to have this meet within the setbacks?
Yeah, through you, Mr. Chair. So yes, that the intention was to allow for a no permit for sheds under seven foot tall and under 100 square feet to be installed within the setback.
Within the setback. So we were comfortable with that within the setbacks.
Right.
Now are we comfortable with that encroaching into the setbacks or does that, are we opening a door for something unintended here?
With the sheds?
Yeah, with the shed because the language Christie's proposing is that it would be in the building permit process that they'd be looked at if they're building into the setbacks. But now we're talking about some that aren't required to go through the building permit process.
Yeah, so how I see this, this is two separate processes. One is a non requirement for permit. That is for the sheds.
Right.
If they're below a certain height and square foot. And the other one is a non requirement for a variance, but still requires a building permit. So I don't know how we could craft that language to deal with.
Right, just so you know, what was adopted was it says an administrative special exception may be granted by the town building official for lots that are under 10,000 square feet in size that establish a hardship in their ability to meet the setback requirement set forth in subsection C3B above. Such administrative special exception may allow encroachment up to the property line, provided that all of the requirements of subsection C are satisfied.
Right, and we were all comfortable with that language, but now you're suggesting a change to that.
Well, what Mr. Gorman appropriately pointed out is we really don't have anything in our code that addresses an administrative special exception process. So when we were crafting the language looking at the Dune crossover, we were going to use that same language, but then Mr. Gorman said, well, we don't really have that. So what if we just said the building official would decide if all other requirements are satisfied?
And I'm happy with that on the Dune crossover. I thought you were suggesting we were to go back and make a similar change on sheds.
Oh, I'm sorry. No, it was just to this one section.
Oh, okay, so my apology. I've taken another direction. I thought you were suggesting we should also go back and look at the shed language.
Just where we in the current code, where we talk about an administrative special exception. Since we don't have that, I was going to use the same language that's proposed for a Dune crossover. And instead of saying an administrative special exception may be granted by the town building official, to use the same language to say the down, the town building official shall determine if it satisfies all other requirements and allow for a shed to be within the setback on those smaller lots.
And maybe I'm being dense here, but there are some sheds that don't require to go before the building official. So they're not exactly parallel.
Right.
I'm not excited to open up a window for sheds, for the smaller sheds to just start showing up in the setbacks without somebody looking at. So why don't we address the Dune crossover and kind of leave the sheds as is? Mark?
No, I agree. I think also the number of sheds.
And what we could do, if you want to leave that language the same, we certainly could do that. And we could use the same language for the Dune crossover regarding a administrative special exception. But if you're comfortable with the language as proposed, we can leave it as is. There just is a little bit of a disconnect because we don't have that spelled out in our code.
Can you?
I think we'd need to expand upon that.
Can you clarify for me, my, you know, we're talking about special exception, whether it's administrative or by approval by this commission or the town commission. We don't have that in our ordinance.
Not an administrative special exception.
We have a special exception.
$1,500 and they have to apply for the board, so.
It's a $600? Yeah, I guess it all depends. I mean, these are two fairly minor. But to your point, there is still loophole there. And it, you know, the burden falls on the building official.
And the sheds are so sensitive because we've known about neighbor disputes. Now, I don't want to be something to open up more neighbor disputes. I think what you've done here is right.
So can we, should we appropriately just look at this today?
I think we're getting off.
We have years.
The question is, and I see it, it looks like everybody circled distance here, you know, feet.
Right, so the secondary issue, if everybody's happy with what's been drafted as subsection 8, right above that in the agenda memo is the deck issue in terms of extending beyond the seaward toe of the dune. So that's the current language in the ordinance. What the commission requested was to address the steps issue. Easier said than done because it created some conversation with staff, our building official in terms of, do you just simply keep that as is? And within that is the assumption that, well, if you have steps on your Dune crossover, those steps cannot be seaward of the toe of the dune. Or do you try to address some type of additional allowance if your steps go past that toe? And that's where we kind of said, let's bring this to this board to have them discuss it and see what they thought was best.
Can I ask?
Sure.
I see two elements here. I see construction of perhaps new crossovers where the steps could intrude into that area. And then I look at people who have existing crossovers whose steps do intrude into that area. And this is something they've had for a long time. And I think we get into trouble when we try to rebuild the wheels. This is what people are used to. We can't really, I don't think we should take it away from them. And if a storm blows it away, like a lot of other structures, they're going to want to build it the way it was. We're getting, we can get into some legal issues here, I think, if we try to reach too far.
The other problem, which is the most is the toe of the dune varies.
Exactly.
Well, can someone define seaward toe for me as opposed to rack line? I've always heard a rack line and so I know what that.
And also, I mean, this has to be permitted by DEP as well. So there's another jurisdictional for review. But the variable dune toe or the toe of the dune brings it to.
Can someone define toe, the seaward toe of the?
The lowest point where the, I think, the dune, the change in elevation to a parent level beach area. That's as close as I can attempt to tie, but that's a very, so you could have a person that has a set of stairs that if the dune line attracts or moves, could be sitting up there proud of what was the toe that it.
Has to some of our common walkways, some of our public walkways.
The converse can happen. The dune can build up, bury the stairs. You've seen that.
That's happened in the corner street.
So because under the DEP criteria, you are allowed to have your steps, not the deck, go to the waterline. But you're, the only thing you can't do is you can't construct obviously during, during the season.
That's absurd. We can go to the waterline?
Wherever the.
You're talking about the high tide?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, the height, the rack line.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Sorry.
The water? We can't allow that. Okay, never mind.
So this is another, I mean, I hate to say this, is like a shed. The, what bothers me is the length of the feet.
It's arbitrary.
Yeah.
If you pick any number, it's going to, some people are going to be happy, some people won't.
It's going to change.
That's true.
So could we say, could we use the term that something regarding the changing toe of the dune?
Yeah, I hate to quote DEP, but they'll take it to whatever the current survey shows. As the document for reference, and that would be.
And that can be manipulated too because it, they might not record, do they always require a current survey?
Yes.
Okay. Why not let it be the seaward toe unless you're rebuilding something that's already there, get up on one? And as Dave was saying, is that a creative issue?
Yes, through Mr. Chair. So number seven does address that grandfather issue. Dune crossover is existing at a time of adoption, shall be allowed to remain and be replaced.
Thank you.
So that's there, okay?
That sounds like you're leaving the addition out of number four. Is that what I'm hearing?
I think David, because I think it's arbitrary.
So do you include the word stairs in number seven?
Crossovers, crossovers.
Crossover defined as.
Why would we want to put stairs on?
So that they could put, at least have a definition of what was there. But it could be replaced.
Yeah, but maybe their, maybe their deck extends to that point as well.
That's, I think, that narrows it rather than expands it, you know, maybe. I would read seven, it would include, or it's, would include the stairs now.
Something regarding the stairs, the height of the dune, the higher the dune, the longer the projection of the stairs, would that be correct?
You're right.
So you have to consider dune height as well. Because you're going to, if you have, if the dunes change in height, as is typical of many coastal towns, the higher you go, the longer the extension of the stairs.
And then there's a response to that because my particular dune is very high, but we didn't do traditional stairs with risers. We put them right on each other, so it's a very short projection. So my stairs will literally end at what you would consider the toe of the dune. So, but that's a matter of preference in how do we legislate that? Because you might want the real steps with the rails to, you know, to go up and down. We want it like.
These are also, remember, these are private stairways, not public stairways. And, you know, if the private stairway needs to do something like you've done, that's what you have to do.
Well, we just didn't want it out there.
Yes. With regards to the addition on article four, it is my recommendation that we stick with the seaward toe of the dune. As I understand it, it is a full-time job trying to define the rack line, mean high water line. It, you know, I mean, it's a full-time job for someone just to do that. So this process, I believe, is going to fall.
It's time of year.
In my purview, and I mean, it's, you know, I mean, it's a fun. And nature actually defines the toe of the dune. That is where the high water goes to and it prevents further growth of the dune. So putting a structure in an era that will be subject to times will actually destroy that structure and require more maintenance. That's one. In terms of design, stairs can be designed to go from north to south or it could go back west. There is no rule that a stairs must project into the water. So, you know, that, that, that's a design issue, as I see it. So that's just my recommendation.
Can I?
So you would just strike everything that's in red?
That would be my recommendation.
Now, can I suggest, because I've been involved in a number of, more than. As I said, DEP still are the permitting agency. It may be who view, there's a consulting firm, Iseman Steps, that are, do a lot of coastal engineering. But we may want to get some input from experience because they do this from Monroe to St. Lucie. So they've seen and just see what, I don't know if that makes any sense, but I don't think any of us really have a conclusive answer for what is right and what's wrong here.
I agree. I'm also pretty sensitive to not putting additional burden on the staff to have to define some of these things, even if the consultant comes out for DEP's line, it's going to be more challenging for staff than what we currently have.
I agree, but my point is we're putting a staff member in charge of making that decision, which even by this discussion is a moving variable. It's an interpretive, I don't know if we had some basis by which he can make a judgment. I don't, I'm not trying to complicate, but, you know, it's nature. DEP are the ones that are qualified to give some guidance, so.
So are we looking at then keeping it just with how it's written for right now with just the deck and not including anything in the red? I know for the town commission, it was kind of really important to them to see this after the meeting. But we kind of were hoping to get direction from you and how we can bring it up after the next meeting for them to review.
Yeah, we're going to solve it today and we'll bring forward what they recommend.
But as you were saying, you could include the word walkway. Decks and walkways shall not extend beyond the seaward toe of the dune, so.
That's, that's fine. You have a question? Sorry. Yes, Mark.
Good morning, all of you. Congratulations to you. There is, there's a legal definition, actually.
Makes it easier here.
Can you hear me, Martin?
Martin, you should. There's a legal definition that the state of Florida uses, that the Supreme Court of Florida uses. It's, it's the vegetation line, vegetation, and it's called a vegetation line. Vegetation line of the dune is actually the legal point where somebody's personal property reach ends, let's call it that. So you only have up until the vegetation line on your dune, even though your property points may extend into the sand. But your legal definition as to what you can do on that dune ends at the vegetation. And that's how the state of Florida defines it. And I think that would be the seaward toe.
Not at.
It actually points inside. It's very close.
Yeah, it's not the same variation.
It's definitely not.
On average, it does.
It's definitely not where the, where the actual high mean water mark is, which is a defined line. But that could be a point of reference because technically by legal definition, that is really where your personal property rights end at this vegetation line. And from there, it's been taken over by the state and it's been taken over by the town. So once you get into the sand part of your dune, once the dune vegetation ends, that's where the town and the state basically have jurisdiction, even though it is personal property.
So the owner then could, and CEO, extend their vegetation line and therefore satisfy that.
But you can't do that further than the point of the high mean water.
Right, but you can still extend it.
And ocean ridge that, that thing between the high mean water line and the actual vegetation of the dune that we have right now, it's like two, three feet in most places. Very, very close up to the dune is the actual, I mean, water.
Yeah, I agree. And I think that's why I picked it. Last thing I wanted was to push a state. But, you know, there is a jurisdictional line. It's not clear. It's fuzzy. And that's why I just suggested getting some advice.
And you said this, this is all DEP anyway, right?
Yes.
So could you just say seaward toe of the dune consistent with DEP or something like that?
Well, as I said, DEP has to permit anything that's done.
Right.
So there will be a permit on record with the state.
So we wouldn't need that anymore.
So I, you know, I'm the interested here from Deranti because he's, he's going to be the one making this administrative special exception.
So my recommendation is still the same because it is so technical that to keep, you know, the natural line as the end of the structure.
Okay.
I agree using personal experience because I could easily go thirty more feet out right now. But that wouldn't be appropriate. And so the seaward toe makes, seems to make a lot of sense.
All right, do we need to?
Ready for a motion?
So is the, is your suggestion that we, I apologize. Is your suggestion that we then change it so it says decks and walkways shall not extend beyond the seaward toe of the dune?
Walkways and steps.
Yeah. Walkways and steps. So it would be deck, walkways and steps shall not extend. And then down an eight?
And then down at eight would allow for our building official to make that administrative determination.
I would ask for a motion and see.
I'll make a motion that we approve the proposed coordinates with the following modifications that item four reads decks, walkway and steps. And the highlighted portion, additional portion be deleted. All other aspects of the change shall remain the same, including the proposed changes to number eight.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Chairman, is that an aye or?
I, you know, I just don't feel comfortable voting for it, so I'm saying.
I'm kind of saying. I believe my floor is.
I'll go aye.
Don't go aye. What are you signing up for? Your decision maker.
No, I I.
Of course.
I'm gonna go aye on this.
What's the concern? Because I want to.
I've just, I've already said aye.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I thought we were going to.
But I mean, obviously, it's a technical item that could be revisited.
Yeah.
I agree.
And we do have the grandfathering for anyone that has it, whatever they have right now, because it's one way they can rebuild it.
That works.
Okay. Your business except for any comments that the commissioners may have. Anything?
I have something I'd like to bring up.
Thanks.
Mr. Chairman. In in the past, we've been dealing with building, the height of residences, which I think we've agreed at thirty-six feet. But it can be adjusted based on what happens to our streets. And I I think there's one way we might be able to allow people to build homes to the max of the far, which is what they want to do. And it seems to me, and I've had some input from residents on this, the flat roof concept. I know a lot of us aren't crazy about the look, but it is a popular look with a lot of newer, younger people. And I think it's inevitable. You can drive from our town all the way down past Boca, and you can see that type of residence going up. So I'm not entirely certain what really creates a flat roof. I believe we are fine with a four and twelve pitch. And we've allowed the, I also have trouble with this, we've allowed the parapet height to be three feet. When when we look at the place south of Melnick, which I now think looks pretty nice with landscaping in front of it. Behind its parapet, we have very steep pitch roof. So I'd just like to see if we can generate a little conversation about what type of pitch we can have that's consistent with this particular design. And I don't want to prevent people from building something that they want because the price of entry in Ocean Ridge is pretty darn steep. And virtually every new house we have here is somebody's dream. And the town's, the look of the town will change over the years, maybe very radically over the years. So I'd just like to generate some thought. I know that within the commission, there's probably some interest in this. So, Mark, could you give us a little thoughts on on what what kind of pitch will allow water to shed? A truly flat pitch would just make a swimming pool on top of the building, and we don't want that.
Well, I take a more fundamental thing. I think it's either one or the other. It's either a flat roof or it's not a slope roof hidden behind the parapet. I think it's, that's created some really awkward looking structures. As I said before, it increases the height of parapet walls.
Right.
To to mask or screen whatever slope. We have a minimum four and twelve. The building code requires a quarter inch for a foot for a flat roof, which is a standard. So you don't have to have a pitched roof on a flat roof structure. But we've we've created this hybrid in town, which has, as I said, created some very let me be polite, awkward looking structures. So I think you're right, flat roofs are here. It's it's, this is the new desire by most owners. And I think we we have criteria now by limiting the parapet wall height, certain things to keep, because it's all about scale and mass. The architecture is important, but I think it's more the mass of how it portrays itself to the neighborhood and to adjacent properties. Subscale, I think, is a fundamental driving force about limiting height. But I don't think anybody in this commission, I think, would be very open-minded over the last couple of years anyway, in recognizing that this is a flat roof structure. And it doesn't need to be masking a pitched roof design. Because this one, which I said, and I said it publicly, unlike you, I've seen nothing of any aesthetic value in that structure. I I, that was the last house to be approved before this commission was, I went on record saying that will be the single ugliest house in town. I'm afraid I'm honest that I keep saying, but that was a good example of how high the parapet wall, the scale of those, sitting on a crown of the dune. It's artificially high right to the street. And then because of our then current code required them to screen that pitched roof. So you've got this extraordinarily high, I would say there's about four or five additional feet on each of those exterior walls to screen that requirement, which was a requirement prior.
And it would look nicer if we said, okay, you can have a flat roof.
Yeah, and I think, I think that's where we're.
So, but if I may, I believe flat roofs are currently limited to fifteen to twenty percent of the total roof area. And I'm thinking, why do we, why do we need that exclusion anymore? I I know what, I know what brought this up. On Harvard Drive South, a home was put up with a flat roof. And it offended the sensibilities of some of the neighbors or one of the neighbors, I don't know. And so this came before the, I believe, the the town before I was participating here. And we said, okay, fifteen percent. So my suggestion is, why don't we face reality? Think about allowing somebody to to build a home with a flat roof or flat roof look and not limit it to twenty percent.
Yeah, I think history, well, the reason for the fifteen or twenty percent was the fear of people doing decks on the roof. I think that was primarily, and obviously, flat roofs were not popular back.
Right.
You know, twenty, thirty years ago. But I, it's worth polling if you want to see. I don't think there's any real objection to correctly designed.
I I agree with what Dave, I'm glad Dave brought it up because, and I think my views would have been different two years ago. And I think we've had to learn the hard way by seeing some of these hybrids that didn't work out so well. One, just two doors down right here on Ocean Avenue. And so I I'd be in favor of proposing an amendment to the code.
I think we've been doing it subconsciously.
Small steps.
Yeah.
Okay, so the proper way to do this would be for Rick to bring this forward to the town commission at the next town commission meeting and see if there is consensus from the commission to have the PNC discuss and do an amendment.
Or whomever's representative.
If you're not here.
I'm happy with that.
Well, he was a representative, so.
Well, I, but I, if I speak on this commission's behalf, I will present it. Not my own opinion, just what the consensus we developed here today. Because I'm not that, I'm not.
Yeah, that's what I asked for a poll because Duran.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I actually had a client who had a recent approval by this board for construction, and he was struggling with a similar issue of hiding a pitched roof behind a parapet. And he said it was creating a lot of design issues for him with his with his trusses. And he wanted to come back, and I even invited him to come and, you know, present his case here about how he probably could have his roof redesigned. Whether he would need a a an approval again, or would there be any appetite to allow it? You know, so that's a question I had. Unfortunately, he's not here, and I'm struggling to remember if it was ninety-five.
Yes, if it was ninety-five, and I mean, they tried to get on the agenda after the agenda was out, and I need to re-advertise it. They're gonna come back to make a change to what originally.
But but I asked him to come to just make a public comment.
So hopefully, they will be coming in June. And then because they want to make that change to.
Right. So ju- just to clarify, and I think each time, I mean, I probably just need to put it there. It is impossible to have a truly flat roof. The code requires that we have a positive pitch, that the water will always run away. And, you know, whether, you know, it goes to a gutter or scupper or, you know, a way of leaving the roof. So there is no true flat roof in that sense.
No, no, as I said, it's a quarter inch.
It has to drain.
Which.
And the code actually defines any roof below a four twelve as actually being flat. So even though it has a pitch, and you probably could see it because it's a low roof or a, you know, a lean roof, it is still considered flat according to the code, but it is not physically flat like you could put a level on it. So that's one of the point.
But but that just gives you a very small parapet that hides that.
Right, you don't require.
It requires.
Very.
Yeah, if you decided to do that.
You're lowering the mass of the house.
Right, which is the, in my mind, is a fundamental issue we have.
And you, what, if if we bring this up, Mark, you're 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 the man with the design expertise. How how should we make sure that we have something that we can present to the commission? What 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 derbage?
Well, I think it's, we did reduce the parapet height, I think, to three feet maximum. For that reason, you know, really, assuming that this is going to become more of a reference point for flat roofs.
It really, it really makes the tie beam height extremely important because
right.
To allow flat roofs and leave the language at thirty-six foot.
No, no.
I mean, it's just totally incompatible with the idea of what we're trying to do.
Sure. Absolutely.
So, I mean, I think that all that language would have to be tied up to to the tie beam and to to whatever parapet or I think you then, you're gonna end up with probably a flat roofed house having a different height maximum than a pitched roofed house.
Yeah, now since we have that now, with twenty-four.
It's.
And then it's three foot, we have an eight, it's really.
Twenty, you have a twenty-eight foot tie beam, right, Mark?
Correct.
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four, and then we have a three-foot parapet.
Yeah.
So that would be the determining.
And I I will share with you that most municipalities have maximum eighteen inches.
Eighteen?
Thank you. That's above the tie beam height. We are quite generous because we're in this variable pitch scenario.
And I think it was also driven by rooftop because it's the next.
Yeah.
As soon as you go flat roof, they're gonna want to put their AC on the roof.
Yeah.
Sure. That'll be the design solution there.
Yeah.
That's why, that's why we.
You're correct.
That's why the whole, we're gonna need a lot of language, just like Delray of, as to utilization of flat structures on top of the building.
Yeah, I think.
They're already putting the kitchens up there, et cetera, et cetera.
Yeah, I think.
Kitchen is not, it's not an easy topic.
Limitations for using the roof as a amenity needs to be considered as well.
I think that's, that's a good point.
So I'm in favor of flat roofs. I'm not in favor of of additional living space on the roof.
I agree.
Because we have towers now by everyone.
Yes, the tower.
Mark, in the municipalities that have eighteen inches above, what is the tie beam height? Is it still?
Some of the, it's not universal throughout all the municipalities, but that's kind of the standard. Anyway, good point, David. I think that's, that's something we've struggled, but we haven't crossed that bridge into.
It's our new Rubicon.
So if I understand the process that Tracy is suggesting is that we don't initiate this on our own, that we first go to the commission and hold the commission, not make a big deal of it. And you, the things can become a big deal with the commission. And and that would be my concern is that they would start, the commission would start trying to legislate this.
But.
At this suggestion.
Right, but don't forget, this board can't take any action without the commission directing you to do so. That's why I said.
Or we could, when's our next workshop? Not till October or?
No, we're gonna have one in July.
Is it better to wait till the workshop where you can have it? Because we've, no, well, we have two commissioners here. Bring it to the next commission meeting. Okay, that's what we're we're being told. So it just needs to be, needs to be brief in the report. Get it, get a little go ahead on it, and then we get to working on it.
Yes.
Okay.
So if I go in your stead, I'll just say it in those words.
Well, what we're, what we should try to do is, Tracy's got the right answer. We incorporate it in the report. And sometimes if the meeting's running long, you say, are there any questions about the report? And and you're done.
So yeah, so number Hudson, if you're gonna pick over for June for Vice Chair Carey, then I'll send you the report that he had that in the past. You can see the structure.
Before that.
Instead, we'll help you with language.
Tracy, you have a little bit of time. We can meet regarding.
More than likely, it will be Duran. He'll help you with the language.
Right, yeah. Perfect, thank you.
Good, now, good point. Any other comments? Dave? You will be absent for June.
I will be absent for June, which kind of, we have David. And I'll be back in July, but the schedule will be such that other members here will need each month to be appointed when they leave here to write work, okay, on the report and be present. And and I'd suggest we rotate because I think that everybody in the commission would like to meet all of us. And and I think they get more confidence in us as a body the more they see us. So. And if you have a week that you're not in meetings. Great, great for.
Oh, yeah, no, I've I started there and then I. Thank you for standing.
It's it's. It's been good. I think we had an opportunity to to clarify things that was being implied that this was being a proactive planning and zoning, and I think there's a better understanding now by the commission that we work, we're here to work for them, and that's what our role is.
Correct. Okay. On that note, anybody have a motion to adjourn?
I move that we adjourn this meeting.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you all. Yeah.
Sorry, Duran, to catch me quickly.